Bringing down in the historical system, really?
Yeah.
Pretty interesting. The history of Kabul Road.
Great morning.
Good evening. Welcome everyone. This is a board of selectmen regular meeting Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Day late because of Columbus holiday yesterday. Hope everyone enjoyed the long weekend. Um, I just have a couple items I'd like to add to you the agenda because they came in late. After we have prepared the agenda. Um. If I may, I will list those and we can all, we can vote on them all at once.
Sure.
Okay. Seven I. Would be a communication from the furnace gallery.
Is that communication?
Not communication. I should clarify that in saying uh they uh wanted to know what they're going to do with their lease. So I think that should be in the selectments report rather than.
I got it. Sorry.
Rather than uh written communication, but it was communication from them.
Glad it happened.
Seven J. Will be the steep advisory committee, Chris.
Yep.
Add that. Seven K setting a date for a town meeting. To deal with the overage in uh. Our waste management. And one that just came in this afternoon. As the other two selectmen know. Is the Kabul Road Bridge Project. And if. We could take a motion. To add those, those items to the selectments report. I'm going to go down and uh. Also hit some things we need to put in new business.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. On uh. Item nine. Nine B. Um. Under two, we should also have discussion and possible action under that. Uh. Nine D is in dog, the town meeting date discussion in action. And last but not least ninety will be. Discussion in action on the Kabul Road Bridge, Bridge, excuse me, uh, letters. Which will begin this. And. Nine F. Will be. Going on. The advisory committee. To the state grant. So.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Okay. Public comment?
Nothing on Zoom?
All right. Uh. Then four people pending minutes. Uh. Take a motion to accept the minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five, our regular meeting minutes.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. I've got some discussions.
Yes.
Uh. Um. Under old business, item E, Kabul Road Culverton Bridge. Uh, Chris Kinsella is meeting with Cardinal Engineering on plans for repairs. I don't recall that as being that um. I, I didn't agree that I was gonna meet with.
Oh, that was for the uh. The uh. What we presented to infrastructure regarding the uh. That's what that was.
Um, for the bridge committee.
For the bridge committee. Yes.
Okay, maybe we can. Uh, amend that to Chris Kinsella's meeting with the. Bridge Infrastructure Committee. To discuss repairs and plans.
Meeting with bridge. Infrastructure.
You're moving that?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Not with Cardinal Engineering, sorry.
Not with Cardinal, because we didn't meet.
Okay.
It was a uh from Cardinal Engineering.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Okay. I second that.
All favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Will be in my carry on.
Uh, the September twelfth special meeting minutes, take a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
The October third special meeting minutes, I'll take a motion to accept those.
So.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the October seventh special meeting minutes.
So.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
He's doing a real good job catching this.
Oh, wow.
Okay, number five, treasure and tax collectors' report. We have no report from the treasurer. As they haven't closed their books yet. Uh. So I will uh take a motion to table any discussion on the treasurer's report.
So move. Second.
All favor?
Alright.
Hey. The September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five tax collectors. For I'll take a motion to receive that tax collector's report.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Ask.
Next.
Um, just gonna go down a few uh communications, written communications we received. Uh, number one, we received from the Hustaku Service Bureau. Uh, thank you for your continued support rather than the entire letter, but it is the usual letter we get and we. You know, send them uh what we uh are, if you will. Of our support for them. And um, one that was very, very interesting, and I know that this will bring some comments from a historical point of view. But uh, we received from Tom Watson, who lives in the Lawson's house on Six Rod Road. Dear Dave, Chris, and Judy, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Tom Watson. My partner Jay Ladetto are, and I are retired and purchased the Lawson's home at sixteen. Six Rod Road in Falls Village a year ago. We lived in New York for nine years, moved. To the West Coast for five years, but wanted to return to this area, which is why we came back last September and bought the Lawson's home. This is our primary residence. I have recently read about Peter and Fay Lawson's history in Falls Village and their commitment to the local community. I thought a way to honor their legacy was for the town to rename our street. Uh, from Six Rod Road to Lawson Road, especially since the Lawson's were the only residents to live on the road for nearly seventy years. I'm not sure if this was legally and logistically a complicated process or whether it's a local or county issue. Uh, but I thought I'd start with the board to propose the idea. Any thoughts? I know there's a historical. Although I think more than once I can look out and say it's been called Lawson Way, Lawson Road, Lawson Avenue for a number of years. Uh. I think I appreciate their thought. But there is a reason why it's Six Rod Road, and Judy, I'm just going to defer to you for a moment for that.
Six Rod Road was the first road in the town of Canaan, now known as Falls Village. So it is very historic. It started from Sand Road and then somehow managed to go to Beebe Hill. I'm not quite sure how it got to Beebe Hill. It must have been off of Rooster Road. And went to the top of Rooster or Beebe Hill to. What is now Six Rod Road, went down that road, crossed over what is now Route Seven. And there's an old road that goes behind the firehouse down to Warren Turnpike. And it connected there to Warren Turnpike. It's very historical.
So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we can find another way to honor the Lawson's and I do have, well, I'll get to that a little bit later on in our meeting. Uh, I've been working with the Boy Scouts and their Eagle Project, so there's a couple things going on and I. Be quite honest with you, probably won't see anything to honor Fay until the springtime, but. That's.
When you have the seniors and.
Right for Peter, but we're gonna get something for Fay. Um. So, but I thought that was important to bring that up and and a little bit of history there.
Yeah.
In changing the road.
I'd be curious as to where, how they came up with that name. Because of uh.
Six rod?
Yeah, rod is. Yeah, it's a measurement of land, made a land survey.
Right.
I think it's like fifteen foot eight inches or something, somewhere near there. Uh. So what was, what did the six rod? What did that D know?
The length, just the.
Probably the length of the road. Well, that would have been the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd only been a hundred, a little over a hundred feet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty interesting.
Yeah.
But. We'll stick with the history in this particular case. Okay. Uh, moving along, uh. To the selectman's report. Just to give you a little update on the steep grant tomorrow. Um, Michelle. And I, Linda, will be meeting online with Sue DeSina. Uh, to answer those questions that we were. Asked at the advisory committee. So we'll be uh. Getting together with her. Uh, rec commission resignation letter from Rec Director Emily Peterson. Um, I'll just read that in now. Uh. Dear Board of Selectmen. And members of the Recreation Committee, I am writing to formally resign from my position as Recreation Director effective November first, twenty twenty-five. I will not be renewing my term beyond this date. I am truly grateful for the opportunities I've had and the support I've received over the years. I wish the Rec Commission, Recreation Commission, continued success in all its future programming and initiatives. Um. Subsequently, the Board of Selectmen prepared a letter. Um. To uh, that we all signed for Emily and we will be giving that. To her and I'd like to read that into the record. Dear Emily, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the Recreation Commission, and most importantly, the community we serve. We would like to extend our deepest gratitude for your years of dedicated service as a director of our Recreation Committee. During your tenure, your vision and leadership have been instrumental in fostering a vibrant and healthy community. Your commitment to enhancing our town farm property, developing and creating engaging programs. Has had profound and lasting impact on residents of all ages. We are especially grateful for your accomplishments and working collaboratively with nonprofits in our community. The Falls Village Halloween and Christmas programs, the Falls Village uh Fall Festival. And town pool programs are just a small part of what has been your hallmark. The hard work and dedication to projects like these have created opportunities for joy, connection, and growth for countless families. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed and the positive changes you have brought to our recreation programs will be enjoyed for generations to come. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Signed David R. Barker for Selectman Judy Jacob Selectman and Chris Kinsella, Selectman dated this fourteenth day of twenty twenty-five.
You need to miss her.
Would you have, have the chair and I'll make a moment for the chair who just walked in? We have Emily till November one.
Yes.
And then we will be on the job search.
Yes, they are currently creating, well, reviewing. All of her tasks and what she did, when she did. And all that stuff.
Thank you. Nice. Didn't mean to call you out, but you did walk in.
Right time.
Right. Right, right time. Um. The next thing that I have. Is. The Halloween event that's coming up. And this was from uh. I actually have two correspondents here. One from Emily and one from Melissa. Uh, dear Board of Selectmen, I am ready to request permission to close Main Street on a Halloween night. Friday, October thirty-first, beginning at five P M. to ensure a safe and enjoyable environment for trick or treaters and their families. The road closure would help limit vehicle traffic and enhance pedestrian safety. During the evening festivities. Additionally, I would like to request the use of the sidewalk and front steps in front of Town Hall for pizza distribution during the event. I will be here. Uh, this will serve as a central accessible location for families to gather and enjoy refreshments. We will coordinate with the town constables to ensure that all necessary precautions and protocols are followed during the road closure and use of public uh space. Please let me know if there are any further details are needed. That's Emily Peterson and we'll talk about this under uh nine.
Yes.
And the second one is in addition, uh, dear Board of Selectmen, in addition, uh, request from Emily Peterson for use of sidewalk and steps. Uh. We, any tables or chairs that you need. You will have access to them and you will be able to use them. Uh, to serve the pizza and cider. Next up is the Falls Village Volunteer Fire Department, use of the green, town green on Saturday, November first, for the twenty-fifth annual road race. Letter from Hazel McGuire. Uh, dear uh Dave, Judy, and Chris, on behalf of Falls Village Volunteer Fire Department. Incorporated on requesting permission to use town green for our twenty-fifth annual road race on November one, twenty twenty-five. Will probably be using it between the hours of eight thirty and two thirty. We appreciate your support of the department as always. Thank you, Hazel. Like to point out, if I run, it'll be beyond two thirty.
Jim.
Um. Next up is the installation of speed feedback signs and locations. Um. Unfortunately. Uh, we were only received two when it all came down. To a two brand new signs. We had hoped for four. We tried to uh. Uh, I can really tell you, I tried to get six, uh, but we ended up with just two and uh. One is now on uh Undermountain Road. About a half mile down the road. And one is in front of the school that has not been activated yet. The two older signs that we had, and we had a very interesting meeting, uh, Tim and I. With Jason Hughes, who's from the Training and Technical Center, T two, the Connecticut Transportation Institute. Um. The other two signs that the batteries had gone and uh some of the numbers had burned out. Apparently they can repair them. And they are going to repair them, but first you have to put them back up where they were initially. So. Uh.
Hmm.
Very easy. Because everything is off the cloud now and all the repairs are off the cloud. So when we located them as last year, they can do the repairs. Uh. From the cloud.
The uh, the one on Undermountain Road is already beginning to.
Yeah.
Is it?
I thought it was.
I thought that's where they had to be installed.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll be honest with you. I, I saw it the other day. It was still straight.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll mention that to Tim.
Oh, maybe the wind.
Yeah.
Yeah. So keep. Um. From the Connecticut DOT. We have uh. Just a, a, a letter from them. They're replacing crosswalk signage and painting on state-owned roads. So they'll be doing that in the area. Donation of a bus from Hatchkins School or by Hatchkins. Judy, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So. A while ago, Dave and I were just kind of talking about the recommission and the seniors and that. And Dave said. Boy, it would be really great if we had a bus in town. And I said, I'm on it. Fortunately, we do over at the garage. We do a lot of work for the private schools in the region. And um, I knew that Hatchkins was going to be getting rid of one of their buses. So I. Got in touch with our contact person and I said, do you know how much they would want for that? And he says, why? And I told him, you know, it'd be great to have in town. And he says. Let me see what I can do. And it took about a year. But they did. They came through and they gave it to us as a donation. So, yeah, so we have it at the garage. We're doing a few minor repairs on it. But then um. Dave can get it registered.
We can register as municipal vehicle. Uh, we've already checked with our insurance. It's just another, another town vehicle. Then we will be uh. Seeking out drivers with a C D L.
Yeah.
So.
So it should be ready for ski club?
I think what we'll see is really quite a, a little bit of savings. In uh transportation costs for things like the ski club. Um, for things like uh the senior, uh, again, the uh. Little bit of a problem, quite frankly, with the seniors, because if we have someone. Utilizing uh the lift, we do not have a lift.
Right. It's not handicapping something. Okay, but Teresa and I have already spoken about that and she said we can work around that. And then um. It's uh good for fourteen passengers, so um it puts it in a different category where it doesn't have to be. Uh, inspected quite as detailed as. The bigger buses, so. It's gonna be great. Especially for the red commission. Melissa already said she's getting interested in you.
The wheels on the bus go round and right.
Oh.
Okay. Um. Moving on, applications. I submitted another application for the active transportation micro grant. If we get this, this will be the third one in a row. We get it. We get hopefully. Again, it's only five thousand dollars, be quite frank with you, but five thousand dollars is five thousand dollars and it's certainly bought. A number of helmets and bicycle locks and bicycles for uh. The uh kids in our uh. In our area. And if you're around town on Friday, the seventeenth. It is bike. Roll and walk to school day. Or the bike walk and roll. So.
Fun of them.
That will be coming up.
Uh, one comment, Dave. Did, we talked about one time about getting a. A bicycle rack for town here in town.
That, that bicycle rack is in this particular.
Good.
Particular grant.
Yeah.
We, we, we actually, we actually uh. Uh, got the bicycle uh. Rack the last time for the school. Because their bicycle rack was wrecked, wrecked.
Yeah.
So we got that for them and we actually put on this particular one, looking for another bicycle rack, rack for nine. Single sided. So we'll see.
Good.
Yeah, I have to, I have to be honest. Sunday morning, I almost pulled in. In front of the cafe, thinking that there was at least one space and there were bicycles all parked along there. That would have been very expensive for me to pull in there. So uh, again. Uh, we're looking at another bicycle rack for downtown here.
Right.
If we get one. If not, there's another grant that comes up and it's like, we'll get it before summer. Uh. H recommendation for the Board of Finance regarding Town Council line, one thousand three for fiscal uh. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, we actually overspent the line of uh. Of uh, legal. Uh, council, one thousand three. We received the uh. Bill from our town council. In September. Which was a little, a little beyond our start of the fiscal year. Uh, old business, thirty-five Railroad Street. I do not have any.
We got, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I go back one second? Do you want the recommendation to Board of Finance to be under new business? Are you making a recommendation tonight?
We already made the recommenda- not.
Oh, you've already made it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I missed that part.
But I just want to.
That was during this again.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just mentioning.
Got it. Thank you.
Um. We actually did that at our October seventh meeting.
Yeah.
Uh. Okay, furnace gallery. Uh, furnace gallery will be um ending their lease. December thirty-first. So we'll be looking for someone else to move in that space. I can tell you right at this moment, I know. Three individuals who are looking for that space. And we haven't even gone out. By word of mouth. Uh, there are other individuals looking for that space. And let me just read Kathleen's uh letter to us. Dear First Selectman Barker, this is a formal notice letter to the furnace. Art on Paper Archive Gallery will be leaving one oh seven Main Street, Falls Village, Connecticut on December thirty-first. We will cancel the Wi-Fi and insurance in space. Before the end of December and we can return the keys promptly thereafter. Thank you for all your encouragement and support over the years. Best wishes. Kathleen Cook. Um. Seven J, Chris?
Yeah, we put together, uh, we've got four individuals that we would like to. Uh. May initiate the steep, steep grant committee with uh or charge them with uh. The whatever. I guess we'll, you'll have to. Tell them what they're charged with, or we have to come up with a decision on how to. Charge them, but it will be Greg Marlowe, Catherine Wales, Eileen and uh. Chris Wadsworth, we've asked him.
Has, have all those people agreed to be part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Here's what, here's the way I would look at it at this point in time, and as we had discussed uh last week. I think that. Having them, uh, charging them as an advisory committee in the Board of Selectmen. Uh, is what I would like to do. I would like to continue to use you, Chris, as the liaison between the two, so you'll be honchoing that. And uh, well, I'll make this motion. That we charge them as an advisory committee. Those weren't. The jewels, right?
Down on new business.
Yeah. But I just want to get it clear that at this point in time that we would charge them. And I mean, we'd be looking for them to actually uh. Uh, advise us on what. Was written in the steep grant and carrying it over so that we can do the request for proposals in. The most judicious way we can and spend that money.
Sure.
Okay. So. Okay, affordable housing planning task force. Uh, I have to say last week is in the paper uh before.
Hold on, Dave. We've got to go back to.
Oh, I'm sorry. So my goodness.
Okay.
Okay, set date for a town meeting. Thank you and thanks for keeping me on task. Um. I'd like to schedule a town meeting. To. Address. That overage, which we have to do.
On.
I can set that up before I leave. You can have it while I'm gone. That's fine.
Can you tell us what's the overage is what we're talking about?
What we'll be talking about is that overage that we had with the uh. Uh, waistline. Waste management line. And I'll prepare the, the call. All I need is a date that we can agree on doing it.
Do we want to uh? That. Talk about it, discuss it under new business.
Yeah.
Ten, let's go through your little segments report. Right.
Seven L. Kabul Road Bridge. Uh, today at. One o'clock, we had a meeting with the state. Regarding the Kabul Road Bridge. And uh, it was a great meeting. Um. It is the project inclusion. In uh, the federal local bridge program. Is covered one hundred percent. By the state and the federal government. Well, it's actually eighty percent federal, twenty percent state. So the bridge will be completely paid for. Now, that doesn't mean that. We wouldn't be responsible for funneling some money through. I hesitate to use the word funnel, but we would be. Uh, having some money go through. Uh, as it's being constructed. Uh, but this is what we've been looking for. This is what we applied for several months ago and uh. I'll look to either the other selectmen, how they felt that meeting went.
That's great, they're very helpful.
The, the money is dedicated, the money is there.
It is there, that's the important thing because we were a little worried about cutting a federal funding, whether it was there or not. And I spoke to some people at the state now two weeks ago and they were very, very clear that the money is there right now.
And if we have to put out any money, it's reimbursed very quickly.
Within thirty days.
That's, that's good.
Within thirty days. So I have two letters that were sent to me that I prepared for my signature. Uh, regarding and when we get down to new business, we'll, we'll discuss those letters. Think that's it for that.
Wow. Yeah, you can go off.
Yeah, I can go on. Okay, old business thirty five railroad street, uh, no updates on that economic development. December fourth or fifth, December fifth, excuse me, I think where there is a, a regional meeting. The affordable housing plan task force, uh, we didn't meet, uh, but a few of us went. Uh, to the opening of a house down in Sharon, a very, very interesting story, if I may digress for a moment. Okay, uh, their old community center right along with forty one on Gay Street, right in front of the school, if you will. Uh, the town gave a ninety nine, ninety nine year lease to the Sharon Housing Trust. And very interesting story, a gentleman who remains anonymous had bought. Two homes adjacent to that years ago and started to establish some of his own affordable housing. And the town, uh, subsequently with two million dollars in grants from the state, which was actually two. One million dollar grants. Because they were applied for in two different directions. They were able to purchase those houses and start. To renovate them, so it was very, very nice. And they had classes and so forth on where everything is now, so. That house still five thousand two that will be resurrected. Should they have a special session? CDN updates, we're all set, they should be coming and finally hooking us up. Oh, by the way, while I have that, I probably should give you an update, everyone, while we talk about CDN, I know we're. Digressing a moment, uh, but you'll notice that there's cameras now. Here. Not inside, but there's a camera out by the rear deck here. There was a camera as you came in the door and there is a camera on our ballot box. They are not operational at this moment. Because they still have to be hooked up to our IT, but. Um, those were the cameras that we were looking at for the ballot box and for security. Uh, E Cobble Road of Culver and Bridge update, again, we had that meeting today, which I thought went very, very well. Eagle Scout Projects, Warren Turnpike and Falls Village Day. Here, uh, we have. Actually have one other scout looking into something. Again, for doing something for the green in that. Swear, wanting for Fay Lawson, there binds for runners, Falls Village Day, Falls Village Daycare and. Uh, their garden, so that'll be for the Eagle Boy Scout Projects. I'm not sure why we didn't use them. Years ago. New business tax rebasing consideration of suspension list. We do have, I believe, one rebate this evening. That is a rebate to Nissan Infinity. Car rental. And it is for. Our car lease, I should say, two hundred and ninety seven dollars and eighteen cents. I have a motion.
Second.
Is all in favor? Opposed? So I will sign off on that. Recreation commit, uh, commission. Resignation letter from Rec Director Emily Jensen. Sorry to see Emily move on, she was a very positive force. In. The discharge of their duties as. Our rec director, a lot of nice programs and I guess it'll wrap up. Her tenure will wrap up with Halloween. And I think she deserves a, a, a thank you from everyone in town who has been involved. I know a long time ago. Actually, when Judy and I started in town government together, uh, back in the recommission, when the pool was over on Page Road. Uh, I, I have to admit, uh, it's not an easy job, uh, we didn't have a rec director at the time. Rec director certainly has, has done a lot in putting those programs together. Um, my, my sincere hope is that we find someone who, uh. Can. Kick up the torch and, and go forward, so I will make a motion that with regrets. But wishes for her future success. Uh, we accept a resignation.
A second.
All in favor? Um, request to close Main Street for Halloween. On Friday. October thirty one, that means the ghosts and goblins can be out late because they don't have to get up early Saturday morning. So.
So move.
Second, you'll make the, the, uh, ask the constables to.
That has, that email has flown in, hopefully. All right, hopefully. We'll have our new vest and new hats.
Lou will be very happy.
He will, a number of people, they told me they would have. Uh, they would, yeah, get them here probably next week or at least before the thirty first. Was no guarantee, but they said be close. So, um.
In favor? Hi.
Should we let Melissa have the tables? Two?
Oh, you wanted to include that?
No, I don't think we need to. I don't think we need to. Okay, uh, the Falls Village Volunteer Fire Department, use of the town green on Saturday, November twenty, uh, November one, twenty twenty five. For the twenty fifth annual road race, and this is gonna be a big one because it is the twenty fifth.
They've already, as of a couple of weeks ago, had fifty one signed up for it.
Right, I think they have more than that.
I'm sure they do, yeah.
So. So I'll take a motion to allow them to utilize the town green.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Moving on.
Oh, we can do.
The town meeting. What would we like to look at?
Does this have to be done, uh, done right away?
I would suggest we do it as quickly as we can, only because we want to. Close the books, if you will.
Okay. This only has to do with the overage on Peter's budget, right?
On Peter's budget because the.
Yeah.
Uh, overage, uh, for the attorney is going to be handled differently. Will not have to go to town meeting.
I think they have to go to town meeting because it's after the fiscal year, remember that whole thing this year and last year?
We talked with King and King.
Oh, okay.
And they said, as long as there was money to be moved, it's only five hundred dollars, you're talking about, moved. From one account to another. That in fact, we could do it because the books had not closed, so it's not. A gross overage. Matter of fact, we wouldn't even have an overage, quite frankly, if, um, the legal notices, we, the legal notices have gone up. In cost and illegal notices come out of my town council. Budget, so because we've had these meetings and so forth, and it isn't because I, I would have been right in a ballpark. So.
So we, this has to be a certain date to be.
Five days.
Five days. So. Are you able to post it off before you go?
I'm able to post it before I go, I have it ready to go.
Wow.
Except for the date.
The early voting is across the street.
Yeah. So I can, is it, is next Tuesday too soon then?
I would say next Tuesday would be too soon, would I, if, if I had my guesses, I would look at the twenty third.
Yeah. I'll put out the twenty four.
Twenty fourth is a Friday. If everyone's good with that, I'll put it out for the twenty fourth.
Yeah, this one's only gonna take a minute, right, so.
Do you wanna do evening or do you wanna do, does it have to be in the evening?
It does not, but in, in looking at. The legislative body, you know, you probably do wanna run it like at six o'clock.
Okay. And we have to get a monitor.
Moderator, I think I would ask either Lou or Mark. And I'll put those two feelers out via email. And ask them to get back to either of you regarding that. But I think it'll be a very brief meeting.
Twenty four.
Twenty fourth, Friday the twenty fourth at six o'clock.
It's just to clarify, so the motion is to hold a town meeting to discuss the overage.
In the waste.
In the waste management line on October twenty fourth at six P M at one oh eight Main Street.
Correct, in person.
In person.
To. To discuss or we make a recommendation to the board of finance?
Well, we made our recommendation to the board of finance.
Okay, yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, we did that on our October seventh meeting, so this is just, this is a town meeting, say yea or nay.
Yeah.
For the purpose of an appropriation?
For an appropriation.
Okay, how much was that?
Uh, to, let me look back in the minutes. Six thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and eighty nine cents. And then the line is six thousand one.
And it's from road maintenance, three thousand and one? Do I remember that right?
That is correct.
Number is two thousand and one for fiscal twenty four, twenty five, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I'm sorry, it's me to, it's you, yes.
All right, so I have to make a motion. To hold a town meeting in October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at six P M at one oh eight Main Street. For the purpose of an appropriation of six thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty nine cents from account. To account number six oh oh one for the overage and road maintenance for fiscal year twenty twenty five. From. From road maintenance number three thousand one, so, is that?
Chris, was that your motion?
You'll have that out.
I think you're. Nah. For the purpose of, I mean, what, what was overage?
For the purpose of an appropriation of six thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty nine cents. To account number six oh oh one waste management from road maintenance number three zero zero one.
Yep.
Okay. She moved, come on. Second.
All in favor?
Thanks Denise, you got it.
Uh, okay. That making care, Cobble Road Bridge. That. Will be our last. Let me just read these letters, uh, and please, uh, my fellow selectmen, if you, uh, add in at any time, but. When we met with the folks from the state. Uh, who are handling the design of the bridge and the construction of the bridge, and I'm glad Steve walked in now because he'll enjoy this. Right? Um, again, the bridge is eighty percent federally funded, twenty percent state funded, which comes out to a hundred percent funded. Uh, the Cobble Road Bridge. Uh, there were some, uh, Chris asked some really good questions about. You know, what if we condemn bridges, can you move any faster and so on, so forth, but I think we were told by their designer. G M two, who's, uh, started the conversation and got the meeting together that. Uh, they're already cutting the design from, and correct me if I'm wrong, from, uh, what's usually forty eight. Months to twenty four months. For design, uh, because it is a state designed bridge, once they come out here and look at everything. Uh, but they feel comfortable in telling us it'll be a five year project. From the time that we sign off. On, uh, doing the project to completion. Uh, but I'm willing to wait that long if they're paying one hundred percent. I will look at the legislative body here and see if I can elicit at least one smile that if they pay a hundred percent. We're willing to wait that long. Uh, so we will still maintain Cobble Road as best we can, but we will be, uh. We will be working on the Cobble Road Bridge and more correctly, the state will be working on it, so I'd like to read just these two letters into the. Into the record here this evening, and one is to Derek, to Derek M, uh, Lassard from the Division of Bridges, Bureau of Engineering and Construction. Connecticut D O T. Uh, regarding project inclusion in federal local bridge program. Design managed by state. Connecticut D O T, federal local bridge program, bridge number zero five one nine three, which I have committed to memory. Cobble Road over the Hollenbeck River. Dear Mr. Lassard, the town of Kane in Kane, and hereby request. That the subject federal local bridge program project be undertaken in accordance with provisions of the Connecticut Department of Transportation's. Design managed by state program. It is the town's understanding that under this program. The Connecticut Department of Transportation will administer project design activities and utilize federal and if necessary. State funds to finance one hundred percent of the design costs and design and build costs. Please advise us if the subject projects are eligible for the Connecticut D O T's design managed by state program. We've already been told that we fit into that program, they are just waiting for this letter. Uh, I'll take a motion to allow me as the first selectman of the town to sign off on this letter and forward it to Connecticut D O T.
Hold on, second.
Uh, discussion? At all, any discussion?
No, I guess the only thing that I would say would be, uh. There, they indicated that they would require more input from the town. When they get about thirty percent complete on their. Uh, on their end, uh, so.
They projected that it would be May at the earliest. That we could have, the town could have input. And again, they give us a template, uh, to send out. Notices to the newspapers and so on and so forth regarding, regarding the bridge, but. No pun intended, we'll cross that bridge when we get to.
I'm in, I'm in favor.
Second letter to D O T has to do with right of way. And it's to Mr. Thomas Melson, Transportation Principal, Property Agent. Administration of the Division Office of Rights of Way, who would have ever thought? Uh, federal local bridge program design managed by state. They have the project number already, zero zero two one, dead, zero one oh nine. And a replacement of bridges, zero five one nine three. Cobble Road over Hollenbeck River, Kane, Connecticut, there, Mr. Melson. Concerning the rights of way tasks that are required for the reference project, please be advised. That the town of Kane does not have sufficient staff or the technical and legal expertise to perform the required work. Therefore, we are requesting. Therefore, we are requesting that the Connecticut Department of Transportation Officer Rice Way to perform the rights of way task. Please advise. Us if Connecticut D O T can assist us with this work, very truly yours. Dave Carter.
I move to uh. Ask Dave to sign that.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Did you say right of way?
Right, right, rights of way, yeah.
Right. R I T H T. I thought you were saying rice, like, you know.
Oh, no, no, I said, no, no, I said rights.
Right.
Like rights.
I got it.
Right. All in favor?
Hi. He should have told me that was a bridge term and I would have believed it. No.
It's right of way.
Yeah, right away. Uh, uh, to. Okay, uh, nothing new from the Bridge Infrastructure Committee. This is probably the new. Oh, wait a minute, yes, we do. I'm sorry, I have a note here.
Advisory Committee.
Steve Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Uh, so I would like to nominate uh. Greg Marlowe, Catherine Wales. Eileen Consella and Chris Wadsworth to serve. Um. That grant, Steve Grant Implementation Committee.
With with Chris Consella.
As the liaison, right? Um. I'll second that for discussion. On. I'm in total agreement with it. I think that the the other night when we had the meeting Tuesday night, when we had the meeting last week, I thought that went extremely well. And I uh, wanted to thank everyone who was there and participated. Um. I would. Hope, I would think and I would hope that when we get to those individual projects, that you would rotate those individuals in. And then rotate them out.
Absolutely, like Tim on the salt shed uh.
He roosts on the trash.
On the trash.
Kind of compact and probably Tim on that one also, yeah, but rotate those folks in and out and uh, when we get to talking about. The rec commission, so on and so forth, that we would also rotate. Them in and rotate them out as as the.
Yeah.
So. All in favor?
Hi, can I ask? Are we adding as an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen effective? Then fourteen?
Effective today, yes, I'm sorry.
An advisory to the Board of Selectmen, right?
Correct.
Yes, got it. I'm sorry, who made who made that motion here? Yeah, I seconded, thank you. Sure.
But we have a lot of. That's. Bridge and infrastructure committee, any updates, Chris?
Not only that, uh, we. You know, we've got these uh. Cobble Road, the big bridge rolling and uh. We'll have to drop back and look at the rest of the bridges and come up with after those. Nothing on the solo committee. So it. Right.
Anything else?
Uh. One. The the uh. Do do we need to accept the bus? The Board of Selectmen. Um, as uh. An asset, accepting an asset to the town. It wouldn't hurt.
It would, when I don't think there's a requirement for that, but I, you know what? I don't think it would hurt. Um. So. Under any other business come before the board, would you like to make?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the town of Falls Village uh. Accept the bus from Hotchka School, correct?
Mm hmm.
And uh. We maybe. Should we send a?
We are going to that, that would be drafted as soon as we find out the the.
I think I know the correct person that I'm just waiting for confirmation.
So we'll leave that part out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we accept the uh.
The fourteen passenger bus.
Fourteen passenger bus from. Hotchka School.
With gratitude.
With great, with great gratitude, yeah. Second, all favor?
Hi.
And Chris, you made you made a motion add that to the agenda? You did second it, Judy?
Uh, yes, yes. That was under any other business come properly before the board.
Chris added it. Judy seconded, it was unanimous, and then you made the motion to accept that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, any public comment?
No, I'm chat. Um, yes. I think so, um. The with the holidays coming. We were thinking of, you know, putting the lights up again. I'm intrigued if that's acceptable. Um, and we last, last year, we were um, talking about the outlets in in receptacle in the lights themselves, the street light.
The poles.
The poles.
Right.
Um, is that, is that a thing that's gonna happen?
Um, Chris had actually brought it up and perhaps we we should have looked a little bit more into. I have to admit. That I had not researched it any further from when we spoke about it last.
Yeah, I didn't, uh, I think maybe a formal request to whomever did the work, I think was Brad, Brad Hadden.
Okay.
Um, maybe he can look into it. Maybe we should we send that formal request to him?
I think we should make a uh. A phone call to him and see what is, because I'm I'm going to freely admit here, I thought. That they had that ability already, that I understand that they were not wired for that. So I'm not sure where we are, Eileen.
Okay, with it. With Tim, I think.
Okay, let me uh, let me speak with Tim tomorrow and see what he knows. And then we'll move on from there.
Okay, yeah, cuz in the past I thought there was. It was terminated, right?
The line.
That they were terminated, everything was terminated.
Meaning. That the wires from the from the poles have come to here.
All connected.
All connected, we just gotta.
I think what I heard, they they went to that. That sub box.
Oh, to the uh, uh, well, we'd have the car charger.
Right.
That one, okay, so.
I think it's just a finishing. Thing, if I remember.
I know. I have to, I have to please sign me, you're gonna sign that, but we'll find out.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah, before you know it, it'll be Christmas.
Yeah.
Okay, let 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 me hype one last thing. Okay, because I'm supposed to, no, not really, um. We have uh, the Falls Village Fall Festival coming up. Unfortunately, I. I won't be able to be here, but there are some flyers. I'll be in Italy. Um, so I uh, there are some flyers here and the Falls Village uh. Pie contest. So. Who was the winner last year? Oh, okay, so uh, there are some flyers here. There are some flyers here and. Because go by way of mentioning uh. Uh, as we close the meeting, uh, before we adjourn the meeting, that I will be gone uh, from the sixteen all the way to the twenty eighth. And in the meantime, uh. My email will say to either call the town clerk or Chris or Judy. For anything that comes up. I will have at best. Limited email.
We will help you.
That's okay, if if you need, yes, if you need me, you can text me, but the emails are like almost. Um, whatever, not gonna pay all.
Hope you have a good time.
Take his phone.
So, so please reach out to them if there's anything that you need. So if I, if I, if I seem seem a little off tonight, it's because I'm still thinking about. What I still have to pack. That that eleven or twelve days, so I I will, I will apologize if I'm, I'm a little uh, less exuberant than when I usually am, but I'm uh, looking forward to it. Um. No one has anything else, all right?
No.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, right up till seven o'clock.
Thank you.
I'll put those in for you tomorrow.
Thanks. Oh. All right, I didn't say.
Looking forward to it.
Yes. Uh, well, call the October fourteenth of the Board of Finance. Meeting to order. Um. John was hoping to log in, but he. Wasn't sure. Amy had already told me she wasn't going to be here and Roxanne is now um, available. Could you have a forum with the four of us? Well. So there's no alternate to suit um, public comment. So. We'll run um, any agenda items to add? I don't have any, okay. Um, I did send the communications that I've received about. The um, enrollment shift assessment that'll be considered part of the budget. Process for. This year. Um. And I think there was a slight.
It was a slight increase.
Slight increase, yeah.
One percent, I think.
One point one percent or something, I think this is, yeah. So, just an F Y I piece of information. Um, and then I did. Also include the information I had from. That the meeting schedules for next year are due by November thirtieth. Which I'm suggesting that I hold for. The November meeting and put it on the agenda for. The other communication. And then um. Dave, you did send, and I didn't share it with everybody, but I will include it in the minutes as the municipal revenue sharing grant notice about that it is going to be. Made honor by November first, so there's a little delay in the. In the revenue coming towards us. When they didn't have town by town determinations.
No.
Okay, so.
There was no agenda.
No agenda. All right. Do you want that to include the things? Okay, thank you. And I didn't have any oil communications. So we have the secretary report for September eighth of regular meetings to um. Uh, proof. I'll entertain motion.
So move.
Seconded.
Any? additions to anything? All done, all those in favor of accepting the September eighth? Signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. On the September seventeenth, uh, special meeting minutes. Entertain a motion to um, accept those minutes.
Excellent. Some listen.
For second?
Second.
Any additions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Right. Two passes. One, the treasurer's report, the first number one bullet, there has been no activity for the Board of Finance expenditure at this time. So there's no report. Um. As we'll entertain a motion to move the June thirtieth fiscal year and. Bundle of reports. Um, to table.
So move.
We just need a second table.
Sure.
Don't you see? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. And for the second, which is the August, what's happening is they're doing some rework on the on the balance sheet to adjust to a. To account for the. Not the reserves, but the um, special purpose funds. Um, and make sure they're under the actual the town balance sheet. Uh, so the auditor and Michelle are working on that, so at this point, they, we are going to um, move to table, so if I would entertain a motion to. Table those as well.
So moved.
So. How? Any other thoughts, questions? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
And. I think we will do, actually, we'll do it separately, um, reconciliations. This time we'll also take a motion to table those.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
The task that was your goal. That was sent to us. Looks like we're running about in line with last year. We didn't see anything that jumped past him. Everybody uh. Move the chain motion to receive.
So received.
Second?
Second.
Tough. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
The board of ed, we actually got, we are caught up. Hmm. Oh. Um. I didn't uh. We wanna do them as a bundle, I think we'll do them as a bundle, if that's everybody's okay to receive them that way. Want to take a motion?
So move.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Questions, thoughts? The only thing I believe is at the bottom of the June one, it did just, I believe the eighteen thousand. Was going into their account. Wow. So I'm just. That's at the bottom of the July twenty four, June twenty five. But finally you're one. Wow. They were under budget by eighteen, so that's being moved to theirs. On the special purpose. Whether, whatever it's.
And that might be allocated for roofing, is that what you're?
I think that's exactly.
That's what they.
Yes.
Season for.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. To raise one to point that out. Um. All in favor of receiving the board of ed?
Aye, aye.
You're right to be.
And sticking with our, let's just talk money to the board of finance.
Hey.
Uh, just to let you know a a couple things. Uh, Steve Grant, uh, update, we'll be working on that. We have a meeting uh, uh, tomorrow afternoon uh, via Zoom with our regional manager. Uh. We do have our speech uh, uh, feedback signs. They're not handing out tickets, they're feedback signs. We uh, have accepted a donation of a fourteen passenger bus. From Hotchka School. Sure, donated to us. That we can use, uh, utilize uh, to uh. Probably the biggest thing coming up is our uh, ski program. Uh, so what we'll have to do, and I will get together. With the chair here to talk about. How we'll shift around some of those monies that won't go directly for a bus contract, but rather we have, we now have a bus. And we'll also use that for the senior center. It'll be a town bus.
Does it require, is it of a size that requires a special license?
No, the fourteen passenger to my understanding, and I'll I'll look at someone who knows who used to fool around with buses, you don't need the bus endorsement.
Oh, really?
It's a C D L.
It's just a C D L.
Oh.
So it is. C D L is still pretty tough to get.
Right, right, if you have some help, uh, but we are, we are quite fortunate, I'm sorry, Judy, I I heard you. There's, I was talking, we do have a number of people in town who have their C D L, so. We would look at employing them.
No free time now.
But again, I think that will be, that will end up being a substantial saving. To the town because it's something that we'll be able to, and I can think of just two things already that we can use it for is for. Uh, as you know, Northwest Transit District for. I'm not talking to just regular transportation, I'm talking about those special events and uh, so on and so forth. Uh, where they charge a little bit more money, we would be able to use our own bus. Uh, the bus itself has only less than eighty three thousand miles on it, it's in good shape. Uh.
And where would that be stored?
Oh, the town garage. Over at the town garage.
Let's see, that's gonna look touch.
Actually, talking to Herman, it's not gonna look any different, it's just another municipal vehicle if I understand it correctly.
Even with the children. True.
Not transporting school children.
Yes.
It's not a school.
Bus, it's a recreation bus. Is that, will that be fueled using the uh, reusable fuel? What we'll do is we'll, we'll do it that way, but what I wanna talk uh, further on down the line, when we have a little bit more. Uh, information for you, I'd like to talk. Uh, information for you, I'd like to talk about diverting some of those funds that they had for their bus contract. And utilizing it. So. And then we do the same thing with the senior center. So we'll divert that money, so to speak, just. Not for, not for contract, but for to to compensate our own drivers and. Fuel. So. I think it's a, it's a first for us. Moving on. Uh, again, sticking to money subjects, uh, we signed two letters this evening, the board selectmen did. Authorize me to sign them for DOT, putting us further into the program for the federal. Bridge program, and they've already been read into the board of selectmen, but basically it has. One is going to Derek and Will Sard, who's in charge of the bridge division. Saying that we want to be involved in this federal program, and then again, it's just one step. We've already been told by by the state that we are in project. Uh, just some very simple questions here, uh, and we were able to ask them questions and then they answered them for us, but. One of the things is a timeline. They have cut the design phase, and I am not a bridge builder, nor do I pretend to be. But, uh, bridge design, they say usually takes about forty eight months. They have cut that to twenty four months because this is a state bridge design. Uh, it will be five years before the bridge is completed. Although it may be less than that, it won't be any more than five years to complete the bridge. Eighty percent of the money. Uh, you may have heard me say before, it's from federal government, twenty percent is from the state. We will be funneling money through, so to speak, we will be spending some money, but we will be compensated within thirty days. For those expenditures. So we will be appropriating money. Uh, they expect by May. If the weather is good through the winter and they're able to do everything they're able to do in the design phase, it'd be thirty percent crisp. Done by May, and then there can be public input because there's no public input for that, but. We will follow their guidelines. Quite frankly, uh, the state is calling all the shots in this, um, be quite honest with you. Uh, everything from design through completion. But I don't see, we'll have some input, but it will be paid for a hundred percent, and I think that'll alleviate a lot of the problems. A lot of our concerns, a lot of our worries.
So thirty percent complete is the design.
And that's when we'll have input time. Okay. With a public meeting.
This is the one on Cobble on this one?
Yes, over Holland, Beck River, zero five one nine three. Cause Steve is laughing because he knows I had that one committed to memory.
Is that complete removal and rebuild?
Putting correct. It's not, that's everything from soup to nuts. I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Steve, when we were speaking with Cardinal before, we actually knew that. We would be in this program, I forget, but they were. Close to two million dollars with total replacement, am I incorrect in that?
Yes, yes, I remember something about that.
Right.
At least.
Then it may be more now, but they were, they will bear the cost of it.
It's a hundred, a hundred and fifteen foot span, so it's, it's pretty, pretty long. Is that what currently it is? That's what it is now. Really?
You wouldn't know it to drive over. So that's where we are. And quite frankly, I don't think I have anything more to do with money, uh, other than what you have under new business.
There was another question I had, just from my perspective, as we get going with the Steve rant. I'm thinking maybe a report to the board of finance, kind of by grouping of the projects. You know, just a summary at each, and I think it should be something that, you know, we can look at of where each area is at. The funds are. Just because it would be nice to, to see the progression of that and see where we're at.
I think that is doable. Maybe you and I want to talk about. Rather than a. Moral reporter, something in a narrative form, maybe we want to look at some type of spreadsheet.
Yep, something just simple of what the status, what's the current, it doesn't need to be, but I think it'd be good to know. Both us and the townspeople of where we're at from a standpoint of funding it, where is it, you know, making sure that we've got the money. Because it's going to be moving to, moving everything around as we're going through it.
I think the, certainly the most positive thing is that we were able to secure that grant. That we can move forward with it, and again. The bridge grant, I think we're so, so fortunate to be involved in that.
I just know Steve trying to manage the, the ins and outs of the flow of the money and the expenses is. Certainly as much on ours, but it's.
There will be money coming through and we will be, we will be appropriating some money, but again, it's a thirty day turnaround. Be reimbursed.
Are you expecting that, that, um, that our share to pay and be reimbursed would be that full twenty percent or some portion of that twenty percent?
Uh, they talked about construction costs, and I'd be honest with you until we have our next meeting with them, where we break it down a little bit more finitely. Uh, as to where everything will be, but my understanding was we might be. Designs, I think designs, probably they will handle all themselves, we will not. Be involved in any expenditures with the design, uh, at least that's what I walked away from when we got to the construction. That's when we may have to appropriate some money, but it'll be turned around within thirty days.
It's just that if it's, it's a large chunk, you know, each time it just puts us at. You know, temporary risk. Allocate that money.
Yeah, well, that, that's kind of what I'm thinking, the same idea with the steep is. Like you've got these multiple projects, we want to make sure we have a good cash flow projection of where we're at, what's in and out, not. Tap ourselves to, I know it's going to turn around, but.
Right.
Are you going to do all the project at once? Are you going to try one at a time or like the salt shed?
I, I would like to, and now we have actually formed an advisory group, we're going to get together with all those particular projects. We'll get a little bit more clarification on RFPs and so forth tomorrow, and a couple of questions that came up. Uh, that'll give us a little bit more clarity on where we go with it, but. I think it being the, the fall moving into winter, there's obviously, uh, some projects we can move with rather quickly. And there's going to be some projects, and again, I look over at Melissa and look at the wreck area. And say, hey, that's something that's going to take some, some planning and getting together, and you probably won't stick a shovel in anything until spring there.
Well, you've got our keys to go out anyways, right?
We do, we do.
So that's going to take some time anyways.
It will. But we'll be moving forward.
Tom brings up a good point, um, and I think when, uh. The further we get into it, they can establish a, a, a schedule for the project, you know. Also with that.
Yeah.
A schedule of values, so they could probably tell us at what point during construction. There would be, you know, the anticipated, um, you know, bigger.
Yeah, because they'll put a big project fund together anyways, and they don't lay it out, tie it up.
I think we'll be in good shape. How these things are moving.
So that's all I have for you.
That's all you have.
I have one question, it's, it's off topic a little bit. The, um. Project they're doing down to the power station.
Yes.
Have you heard any, uh, any values of what that's going to be, as far as in, in increasing taxes? For that they will be paying.
Not for us, for them.
For them, for them.
For them, Steve, uh, we have not heard any projections, but I know that, um. Our assessor Kayla Johnson is on it, this, this is the first time she's dealt with Eversource. Uh, regarding property and personal property and so on and so forth, so she has been keeping an eye on it. Uh, we expect that project, although we have nothing to do with it, but we in fact met. With the project manager. About a month ago, I believe it was, and, um. They're projecting that to go well into the spring, they'll be working through the winter, and if you. Yeah.
He said twenty twenty seven should be.
Will be finished, well, so we may not see any, any net gain. Until. That's completed. But what they've done is they've moved in, uh, certainly some multimillion dollar pieces of equipment.
They will talk them into changing those turbines too.
Well, I can, I can tell you one of the discussions, and I, I'm sorry, we're, we're a bit off topic. One of, one of the discussions we had was about the condition of Water Street. Uh, because of the heavy equipment and they're removing guardrails and so on and so forth, and, uh. They said that we would on a regular basis. Uh, monitor that with, with Tim, with our DPW manager, look at it. If there's anything that needed to be, be done immediately. They would take care of it, but we're going to wait till they're all done, then we'll assess what. Where damage happens to the load once, once it's completed.
Right, did the town have any oversight on permitting on any of that, or the river commission? Nothing on the river commission?
I can't speak for the river commission, Carl, because I had been asked by several people with the river commission regarding it. And nothing I, I'm aware of went through there, I can tell you the town had nothing to do with permitting, everything was done through.
Were you aware of the scope of it though?
Yes, and to be perfectly transparent, when they showed everything on paper. Uh, it, they are still within their footprint. I, I don't think, uh, I could have imagined what. Within breadth of, of what it is from what they, what they showed, and they didn't misrepresent anything, it was just. Everything is, is, if I may use the, the term condensed into that area. So again, they haven't stepped outside their footprint.
And is there a plan for future increases also?
I can't, I can't say. Do not know. But I know that this will certainly bring up, uh, the generating power. So.
Anything else? Okay, I'll try, um, old business. Um, I have been. We haven't had any movement, but I've been collecting border fire policies, and I've gathered a number of things in documents and. Obviously now it's not the time to address it, but. I'll definitely prepare a list. Of what I have and gather everything, and maybe we'll start, we can share it out in folders somewhere to show what I've gathered before we put it into. The grouping of policies. Which I think is obviously needed.
Yes.
In the capital plan, it's my fault, I didn't sell them Dave. With dates, but when he gets back, we will meet, I will put, I will put together, I will send you some dates after that. And the RFP, I have redrafted it all, I have not sent it, but I have redrafted it all, and I was just like some input on. Timeframe. Because I have to put in the RFP, obviously I have to give them time, different. Uh, auditing firms. To turn it around. And then we have to provide a date in there that they would be, have to be here and be opened. So. I'm thinking probably February to come back, because I think you need time with the amount of data that's really from a good solid RFP. I was going to give it like a mid February timeframe that it be returned. The last time they did a big one like this in twenty seventeen, that was sent out, they actually had opened them May fourth. Or that, yeah, so I don't want to do a May fourth, I'd like to do a February. Um, I think if we send it out in a January, it could be tough, but I think mid February.
Do you have any idea how long it took to respond?
I don't. That's the only thing I don't know. So the one in between that was sent out was just literally a single page. Uh, it wasn't looking for a true request. I also scanned the, the state, and there's five. Um, auditing firms that are used by most towns our size. So I was going to send it to us by.
Do you, do you anticipate when we could be ready to send them out?
Um, well, that's the question, I could send them now. Next week, for that matter. Can give it July, or do I wait until, you know, the, after the election? I'm ready to send it, I could send it, as long as everybody agrees on a date for it to come back, so do we say January instead?
People, that's going to give them like sixty to seventy.
Thinking you need about ninety days.
You said you, you're going to send it out to five?
I could send it out to five, I picked, there were five that were coming.
Okay, I believe the last time that went out to three, and Ken, Ken was the only one that got back to us.
And, and there may be nobody that come, you know, it may still be King and Gay. But I guess it gives an opportunity to see, I don't know.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's covering all bases. So October, November, December, January, it'd be mid-January.
What, what, um. Is, this is a board of finance responsible for reviewing the RFPs in a regular meeting or a special meeting?
I think it would be a special meeting.
So we would want to target. So it's not likely to be something before our February meeting.
Okay, the after, it would be. If I.
So I think mid-February is probably a really safe bet, that gives them.
A little over ninety days.
Yeah.
In the holidays, in the middle of it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And then a decision has to be made, you know, two, three weeks.
By March, we could have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I would say, I would say that's fine.
I mean, it could end up being one coming back.
Yeah. Whoever shows up on that particular day.
I mean, we could get, they could get all, a response from all over, I could respond from all over. So we'll give it a shot, all right, I appreciate the input then. That's what we will do, really, for it to be coming back. I gotta pick a date out, so look at the calendar.
I wrote down fifteenth.
We wrote down fifteenth, but that is the middle, let's see what we've got. What day of the week is it?
Fifteenth is a Monday. Oh, no, no, that's a good one.
Yes, let's say thirteen.
That'd be Friday and Thursday. Nothing wrong with that. It's worth, because everybody on Valentine's Day is going to be looking at overs. Right, just thought I'd point out.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Suspense items, I do not have any that I'm aware of. So the new business. Is whether asked to. Do appropriation of five hundred dollars from our twenty four, twenty five. Balance, um, quarter selectmen's twenty thousand, which remains to be. Twenty seven hundred is what's left.
Correct.
Um, and this was for the legal fees, that is a bill of thirty thousand. Please go right ahead.
If I may, um. Roar back and roar back, uh, sent us the bill dated September fourth. Which was, uh, well beyond, uh, our. Beginning of our fiscal year, per services rendered for the twenty four, twenty five. Uh, fiscal year, and, uh, we only had three thousand. Ninety one dollars and thirteen cents left in the town council line. Number one thousand three, so what we're asking is for a supplemental appropriation of five hundred dollars. From, uh, the board of finance. Out of last year, this is. Uh, out of your line, where you still have twenty seven hundred dollars, you could appropriate that five hundred dollars to us, so we can. They roar back and roar back.
And close the books.
And close the books, we're actually going to close the books on the twenty fourth with the town meeting with that. cause I didn't know how we were going to handle this, so we're going to have a town meeting on the twenty-fourth, which will absolutely close the books with the overage that we had, uh, with, uh, waste management.
Okay.
Just no sense of scheduling two meetings?
Does anybody have the cap numbers?
Uh, it is a town council, one thousand three. And board of finance? No. I don't. We'll be, we'll be. Okay, okay, so we will, so we will entertain a motion to appropriate five hundred dollars to the town council line from the board of finance line um, for the purposes of
Covering.
Covering the overage for, um, the legal expenses incurred in twenty-four, twenty-five.
And again, no, certainly no reflection on the board of selectmen, board of finance regarding this, we got the bill September fourth.
I will, uh, I will, I will move that.
Second.
Thank you.
I was, I was, I was thinking about something else.
No discussion.
The, uh, discussion, um, do we have to make sure the motion says supplemental appropriation or the appropriation fine?
Hmm, nice. Uh, probably supplemental.
And then I would move to amend the original motion, we add supplemental, the appropriation.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any other discussion and they amended? All those in favor of amendment to add the word supplemental to the original motion?
Alright, alright.
And then a vote on the original motion? Uh, do we need to restate it or?
No, there's no further discussion on the original motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright, alright.
Thank you. So I close this that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And any other new business, uh, any other business? I have, I have to thank Steve.
Oh, I, I, I would just, I would just like to say on behalf of the board of, oh, select, okay, pass Steve here tonight, Steve, we served, uh, ten or twelve years, he can't even remember.
I don't even remember.
You don't remember?
At least, at least a decade, uh, wanna, wanna thank him for his, for his service, uh, to the town. Uh, I would be remiss also if I didn't thank, uh, John Steinis, who will not be running in November. Um, I want to thank Carol Stats, she had submitted her resignation on the board of finance, but thanks for, for her service also.
I don't think Roxanne.
And Roxanne, serving as an alternate, would also like to thank her, we had that on record, that we thank all these people because they are volunteers who spend their time listening to me talk about money, and you talk about money, and, uh, make those decisions, those fiscal decisions that really guide our, our community here.
So we're trying to make a motion to make him a lifetime member of the finance?
It's, I think, can I adjourn? Well, that's the quickest term that I saw.
No, I, I like, I like to say, anybody, uh, it's, it's actually was very interesting, I, I helped, I served with, uh, uh, tons of people, I can't even name them all now, um, and to work with everybody and to, uh, if anybody has any issues with where your, where your tax money's gone, or what it cost to run a town, get on this board and you will learn and you will be put at ease, um, I have learned a ton. And, uh, I'm just happy I was able to, to do it.
Thank you, we thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any other comment? Well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, so moved, yeah.
Wait, wait, you want a second, that's.
I did. I made the mo, uh, I made the motion, I said.